I'll set that. Okay, so welcome. I am recording this, the public hearing now. I am going to, are you guys okay with me reading a statement and getting it all started? Okay, alright, then I got official statement I'm going to read. And, and bring it up here, I think, good. Got my screens up, excellent. Alright, so. I'll start off from scratch here. Good afternoon. To all those in person and online, I welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jim Ostrowski, I am. With the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, and I'll be the hearings officer today. We have James Cliff, Deputy Director at Eagle, here as well as Mark Camerati, and I'll have them introduce themselves in just a moment. And they'll be listening to your comments this afternoon. They will be considering all comments prior to finalization of the new definitions and the scoring criteria. This public hearing was scheduled to take public comment on the proposed changes to definitions and scoring criteria. That are detailed in Public Act one thirty-two of twenty twenty-two. And that, that are related to both the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Programs at Eagle. I'm gonna give you a little background and the purpose of this hearing. Recently enacted Public Act one thirty-two of twenty twenty-two changes, changes of the term disadvantaged. Community to overburdened community, and adds the new term significantly overburdened community. And requires Eagle to operate or Eagle to update definition with input from stakeholders and the public. In addition, the legislation requires Eagle to develop new scoring criteria to prioritize projects for both. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Programs. Stakeholder meetings were held on August tenth and the seventeenth to discuss draft proposals. Both for the definitions of overburdened community and significantly overburdened community and the scoring criteria. You can find recordings of both those hearings on Eagles YouTube channel. And along with additional information at the Overburdened Community Definition and Scoring Development link. On Eagles Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and Clean Water State Revolving Fund websites. Under the information heading. The purpose of today's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed changes an opportunity to provide comments or information. On the development. Comments or information the department may consider as it finalizes new definitions and scoring criteria. Please note the proposed definitions and scoring criteria that had been shared. At stakeholder meetings and on Eagles website are still in draft form. The department has not yet finalized the new definitions or scoring criteria. And we hope having the details of the draft definitions and scoring criteria will help in providing comments. Okay, how the information will be used. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider. While finalizing the new definitions and scoring criteria. The comment period will end at midnight on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Comments may be submitted, written, may be submitted via written or verbal comment during this hearing. If you would like to make a comment but do not wish to make a verbal comment today, you're welcome to submit a written comment to the department. Written comments may be submitted via US mail to the following address. Eagle, Attention, James Clift, P O Box three zero four seven three. Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine oh nine, seven nine seven three. Or via email at. Frantzk@michigan.gov and that's F R A N T Z K. At Michigan dot gov. Alright, after the close of the comment period, the department will review all written and verbal comments received. Alright, so procedure for today, we'll be hearing comments today from those attending in person and virtually. And comment time is limited to, we'll say, five minutes today. Or should be three minutes, I'm sorry. Please note that we will not be responding to your comments or answering questions during the hearing. We will be simply listening to your comments for the record. If you are attending in person and you submitted an attendance card, and I have one up here, hope you guys got it, it looks like a little attendance card. If you're attending, you fill out that card, indicate that you would like to make a comment in the bottom, if you'd like to make comment, make sure it comes up to me and I'll call your name. And you come up to the table up here. And share your comment. Once those comments are heard, I'll call on anyone else in person who has not submitted an attendance card. But would like to make a comment. For those of you attending virtually, also I've got quite a few of you here. If you'd like to make a verbal comment, you may use the raise hand feature and I will unmute your line so you can speak. We also will be going through all those people that submitted ahead of time. And if you put on your list that you want to make a comment, I have your name here, if you submitted virtually. And I'll call on you first, virtually, and you, I'll unmute your line so you can talk that way. If you are speaking, I'll let you know when you have one minute left. Now do my best to address commenters in order that the hands were raised or the listing that I have in front of you me here. Please recognize department staffer here this afternoon to provide a fair opportunity. For you to express your views and listen to those comments. Thank you for your attention. I will now turn over to James Clift. Deputy Director Eagle for a brief presentation, after which I'll begin calling the names, those who have indicated they would like to comment. So James, if you wanna maybe come up here to our desk and. Start your presentation. We should have, do you ever? Watch your step there too, James.
Doesn't work, I make sure I get it here.
Alright, thank very much, appreciate it Jim. Again, my name is James Cliff, I'm one of the Deputy Directors at the. Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy here, oversee some of the policy and outreach. Portions of the department. And what I'm gonna do really quickly here, and for those who attended the stakeholders meeting. I've got an abbreviated version of the presentation that was given at those meetings, so it will be a quick overview. Of the development of the new definitions and the scoring criteria. Expect I'll only take maybe ten minutes or so. Again, just to make sure that for those of you were, weren't able to. See those hearings, to get at least an overview of kind of the changes that have been made to the statute. As Jim mentioned, the two definition changes, the definition that used to be instituted but in statutes for more than twenty years. Was that for a disadvantaged community. The legislation that passed basically asked us to recreate a definition for overburdened community. In place of disadvantaged community and add a new definition of significantly overburdened community. Those kind of categories result in, you know, certain benefits to those communities that go through the state revolving fund program. Those can include loan forgiveness, they can include a lower interest rate on loans that are given. And in the scoring criteria, it results in additional points that could push your project up the list. Then again, the scoring criteria gets into the, the priorities of the projects that are submitted to the department. The goals of updating the definition, there was some language in there that was used by the Census Bureau, you know, many years ago, but that. Doesn't even get used anymore, we deleted kind of obsolete language. We tried to make the designation clearer, so a community would know in advance whether or not they would qualify or not. In the past, we have heard some criticism that they kind of had to wait for the department to make a decision. We're trying to make it easier so that communities can kind of determine that themselves. We're expanding beyond income as the primary criteria for disadvantaged community. The main new one is using taxable value per capita within a community as another one of the indicators. Of kind of an overburdened community that might otherwise struggle for finance projects. And we're trying to, as we develop the definition, we have lots of input. The legislature gave us input on some things we are supposed to consider. But we're always weighing kind of the value of the new data that would somebody would provide. Versus the burden of them gathering it together, you know, did it add value to kind of us making the determination? And in many of the criteria that the legislature suggested, unfortunately, the data, just the data sets weren't, weren't fine enough grain. That they were accurate to the county level, but no kind of smaller unit of government. It wouldn't be applicable at the village or township or city level, therefore we found those data sets to be kind of unacceptable. Basically, I'm just, how the definition works is for significantly overburdened community, there's kind of two cutoffs. The income cutoff is household, the community kind of. Median annual household income is less than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the poverty level for a family of four. So in twenty twenty-one, that worked out to be thirty-four thousand plus dollars. With, if the median annual income, household income for that community is below that. They automatically qualify as a significantly overburdened community. The second criteria is the taxable value per capita. And this is a, a data set that Department of Treasury has developed, they've started to use it in some of their grant programs. So what we did is we took those communities that represent the lowest ten percent of that category. And we have designated those significantly overburdened communities, so it's just kind of, kind of cumulatively be adding up. The, the population and looking at who's kind of at the bottom of that list, so the lowest ten percent. By population qualified. Under again, twenty twenty-one data that worked out to a taxable value per capita of around five fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. For overburdened communities, we're looking at first, a community has to basically be below. The average median annual household income for the state. That is about fifty-nine thousand dollars thereabouts, so you first you gotta be below that. And then you've also kind of have to fall into kind of one of these categories. One of them is that taxable value is less, that is kind of on the lowest twenty percent. So again, we took an additional ten percent, and so they're, they're, they're in the lowest one-fifth of the state. In taxable value, they then qualify as an overburdened community. And the second one looks at kind of affordability. It compares rates to the median annual household income, so if the rates for the community exceed one percent. Then that community will qualify as an overburdened community. So kind of that's the shorthand of how the, the two definitions work. If you do look at the website, the actual language is on the website and you can see it there. I'm now gonna jump into the scoring criteria and kind of quickly kind of walk through the new proposed scoring criteria. The first one is for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and then we'll do the Drinking Water. So as you can see, the, the number scale on each of them add up to a hundred points. And the first one, compliance, so communities that have enforcement schedules. Either through administrative consent orders or consent judgments are awarded kind of fifteen points. On the second category, the storm water, if you have a violation notice for an MS four community, then you get five points. Under improving infrastructure, we look to see whether or not a community has an asset management plan. If they've kind of engaged in some regionalization of some of their operations. And looking at, at kind of resiliency to their system, do they have backup systems and things like that in place that provide resilience? Again, up to twenty points available in that category. Again, similar on the storm water side where asset management or regionalization can also get you twenty points. As I mentioned before, under the affordability of kind of overburdened category, overburdened communities get additional twenty points. Significantly overburdened communities get additional twenty-five points, and that same on the storm water side. Then we look at kind of the public health aspects, and we kind of break these into. Communities that have sanitary sewer overflow kind of situations in place. And they can get certain number of points based on kind of their, their weather-related SSOs. And making sure they're, you know, whether or not they're meeting current policy. Then there's some operationally related CSOs. That cause kind of chronic problems within the system, can result in scoring of points. Under the combined sewer, it looks at kind of a volumetric measure of kind of the annual combined sewer overflows that we see occurring. Under, there's a one special category here for bio solids, including one of the PFAS substances. And that's kind of on the, the wastewater sludge aspect of a project at them, are communities that are addressing that. Last one here gets into the, the water quality issues. And looking at kind of the, the types of violations that are occurring and the impact it's having on water quality. Results in kind of up to twenty points. Same thing kind of on the storm water, kind of looking at some different measures that look at things that impact water quality. And score points in that category. So this is kind of a summary of them. Kind of available points in each of those categories, kind of adding up to a hundred points. On the drinking water side, a little different, again, you'll see the points available at each one. Again, we have points for compliance, regional efforts to address. Technical managerial and financial capacity issues involved in the operation. Can score points for consolidation of kind of services or operations, can score additional points. And whether or not the project is subject to an enforcement order. So again, all kind of falling into the general compliance category. Again, a public health category, looking at the potential impacts that are being addressed. So we, there we have the lead service line replacements. Acute violations of different standards, nitrate, ECOI, things like that. But then certain number of points for non-acute violations of standards. And some of these, as listed, kind of here, some PFAS VOCs and some other topics. And then, history of proactive public health protection. So they're looking at kind of communities that are being very proactive about kind of trying to minimize those public health impacts. We look towards, we're off the top here, we've got drinking water.
Everybody online can see it.
Again, this is getting into some things that, that improve kind of the, the operations of a facility. Trying to result in the, the. That's getting a lot better now, don't read anything. Looking at things where you're eliminating kind of dead ends on your drinking water, things that can impact water quality. Changing to a more protective, better, higher quality source water, can get you additional points. Active kind of protection programs. Again, some things on improving infrastructure related to asset management. Sharing infrastructure assets with your neighbors. And things that include kind of multiple classes, asset classes, I think of that as. The water main and the lead service lines and kind of ancillary things, doing it all at once can score community additional points. And again, we have the affordability metrics of twenty points for overburdened and twenty-five for significantly overburdened. I think really important to remember here is. We've currently and next Monday, I believe, there's a hearing on this year's state revolving fund and the intent, the draft intended use plan. None of these apply to this year's projects. These are all going to apply to next year's projects, projects where the intent to apply is due on November first. So our intent is to kind of finalize these, hopefully by, you know, around October first. So communities can see them before they submit those intents to apply, but basically they'll be applying to kind of next year's projects. The, we are kind of looking forward to, to people's input on these. Again, to the extent we're, we're very interested in your comments, we will not again be responding to any questions you have. If you do have questions, you know, you may submit them through kind of the website, we can get somebody that will try to get you kind of. Your questions answered, plier to us finalizing the rule. The public comment period is open for one more week, I believe, until September fifteenth. So after this hearing, you still have a little bit of time to try to get your kind of questions answered, if that's gonna impact the comments that you're gonna make. So, our contact number again, and I am going to turn it back over to Jim.
Okay, thanks, James. Yeah, I, I have got a couple people that are here today with Eagle as well, I'm gonna have them introduce themselves. Mark, do you wanna say where you're from or your, your name or?
Mark, I'm in Whip, so I'll be looking at a lot of you. Basically, I'll be looking at the overburdened.
Right. Okay, and also online, and I didn't, I tried to give them a little fair warning, Brian Thurston. And Paul McDonald are both here, so Brian and Paul, I don't know if you wanna switch your cameras on really quick and just introduce yourselves to let everybody know you're listening in.
I'm here, but it says you have control of my camera and we can't turn it on.
Same thing, Jim.
Okay, hold on a second, I will fix that, sorry guys.
Alright, mine's on.
Okay, there you go, okay, go ahead.
So I'm Brian Thurston, I'm the Assistant Division Director with the Eagles. Drinking Water and Environmental Health Division, and so I'm listening in on the comments today. That we're, we're getting in this hearing and we'll be taking those back and evaluating those against our proposed scoring.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
And good evening or afternoon, everyone. My name is Paul McDonald, I am Eagles Chief Financial Officer. The Water Infrastructure Financing Section administers the State Revolving Fund Program within Eagle. And that is my interest in listening in tonight.
Alright, thank you both. I am, I just stopped my screen sharing, for those you hear, I know you didn't see them, but they're listening in as well to the comments, you could, you could hear them. I'm gonna do try one thing before we start off the public comments, and so bear with me folks, I wanna see if I can switch my microphone to see if that'll work. If not, we'll just go with my other one, I think Matt's on the other line, is a co-host helping me out online, so you can tell me if you can hear me still. Okay, well, that didn't seem to work, let me try this. Alright, that didn't work, so we're just gonna go to Plan B, and I'm gonna be broadcasting through this laptop right here. So you guys should be able to hear it, I'm gonna try to crank it up so you can hear it. And if we do need to make any other adjustments, I will, I just note that. We are recording it, and so for some reason something doesn't get heard appropriately or something like that, we will go back and review it. And we'll have everything on, in the recording, so that should be, should be just fine, so. I'm just checking in with Matt online, can you, can you hear us okay? I wanna make sure we're good.
Yeah, I can hear you fine. People that are making comments on location there may need to be close to the microphone, it was a little hard to hear, Mark.
Yeah, and I'll flip it around so you guys can hear it, so we only got a couple, couple, couple of people here that wanna make comment. Alright, so let's get to it, so if you remember earlier, I asked you to make, if you make a comment, you're gonna come up. And I call your name, you're gonna come up here and state where you're from. Any affiliation and repeat your name as well, because I don't always get it right. And you have three minutes, I'll be using my phone to keep track of time, and I'll let you know when you have one minute left. Once we get through the people here, I'll go online, and we've got a few people in my listing of people that said they wanted to make a comment. After we're done with that, we'll open it up to everyone, and you can just raise your hand, so. James, you ready, and I'll just, alright. So with that, I'm gonna start calling the first person up here, Randy Zink. Randy, go ahead and take a seat up there, and I'm gonna. See if we can do this, so hopefully we'll hear it. And Matt online who's testing, I'm gonna have you give me a thumbs up if never, so. Yeah, Matt, can you hear, okay? So you just wanna speak up a little bit louder, it'll be good, alright, it's good.
Hey, I'm Randy Zink, I'm President of the Villager Palamo, and this is our second year of applying for a grant. And assistance. Last year, we had a situation that was. Kind of disheartening and heartbreaking, we were told. By the list that we were gonna be granted five hundred, about five hundred thousand dollars for a project to replace our. Water mains and robot, you know, make the system more robust. Unfortunately, because of. The, the way the, the projects fell out after finalization, we fell off the list, we were the last project. Under the qualified projects, so this year, we applied again. And we are the project ranked number forty right now. We are still trying to work through some. Potential ways to, to improve our situation right now, but we're here more for education and trying to understand. What the, the new ratings are and. Looking at the list, we're, we're one of the five bottom as far as our population is concerned. We're at four hundred and sixty-nine, so we're a small rural community. But we've got an infrastructure from the nineteen fifties that we're trying to replace, and. Unfortunately, you know, at that size of a, a community, funding is very hard to come by. So this was our, our attempt to find some funding, and like I said, we were. Heartbroken last year, and, and this year we aren't even on the list for, for funding. And I'd just like to make, make a suggestion, you can take it as, as you want, but. It would be nice looking over the list of the projects, and, and I know it's hard to do. Points wise is great, and I know the legislation is in control of how the points are broken up in that. But if we could maybe have a balanced sizing of the communities that are on that list. Or potentially, if a community gets a grant or, or funds for one year. They, they don't get funds for the following year, so that other communities could reach. Their, their potentials for project improvements within their infrastructure. So that, that's kind of. Our take, we're here for education, but we also want to, to be that voice for the smaller communities that are here in the state of Michigan. And I'm in it. I, I thank you for, for listening and, and look forward to working with all of you in the, the future.
Okay, thanks, sir. Alright, that is all the people who are, who are here that wanna make comment. I'll open up to anybody else in just a minute, I'm gonna go online right now. To see who's all asked to make a comment, so when. You registered online, you were asked if you'd like to make a comment, and a few people did say they wanted to, so. I'm gonna check to see if those people are actually in attendance, so just bear with me just a minute, so the first person that said. They'd like to make a comment is Julia Ruffin, and I'm checking to see if a Julian Ruffin is checked in here. And, oh, there she is, so Julia, oops, wrong one, right? Julia, should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep, can we hear us, okay, yep.
Okay, wonderful, yeah, like the previous gentleman, I am here for educational purposes too, but. I, I live in a, what I call a legacy community, Pontiac, Michigan. We were under emergency management and. I'm just curious to see. If communities like Pontiac or Flint or Benton Harbor who are under emergency management. If criteria is set up for those communities, as well as, you know, the fact that. There's environmental impacts because sometimes of the industries that have been here. That have impacted our, our infrastructure, which is some of them hundreds of years old. In legacy communities like Pontiac, Flint, so how, how do you? How are you managing or? Putting points in for considerations for communities with that, with that type of consideration?
Ms. Robin, we're not really answering questions at this point, we're just making comments, so. You just, for comments.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I'm, I wanna put out there, if, if you would have a, a criteria for. Those in that overburdened segment, as you all continue to define what overburdened looks like. Because many of those communities are redlined too. So, I'm just hoping that consideration with the criteria will be. inputted in that way as well considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, so next person, just want to remind people that when you make a comment, please repeat your name and any organization that you might be from. The other person that asked to make a comment online was Jamel Hussain. So I am, hold on, I'm going to check to see if knows here. I do not see Jamal Hussain signed up here. If, if that's you, if you want to raise your hand, I'll call on you. But I don't see your name here as being logged into our meeting today. All right, another person is Silver Ordoneo. Sylvia, I am going to check to see if you are here. I do not see Sylvia. And again, if you signed in under a different name than what I have here as you're registering, you'll want to make sure you raise your hand so we can get your comment. So if either Jamel Hussain or Sylvia Ordoneo has signed in, just raise your hand. Okay. All right, well, let's move on. We got, we're next, we're going to go to hands raised, I guess, for, for questions. First, I'll ask, is there anybody else here in this, in our room live here that would like to make a comment? You guys, okay, making the comment. Okay, go ahead and come up and if you would, please just repeat your name when you come up and the organization you're with and speak up loudly because I got to try to capture you through my microphone here because the other one's not working.
Sure. Yes, my name is Shane Peterson. I'm an engineer with Casey Vanderbrink Engineering. I'm representing today the Villager Palamo. And I'm also here for more of an educational purpose and I, I apologize because I will be asking some questions that I know are rhetorical and I won't get answers to. But it's, it's along the lines of trying to understand the scoring system and how each of the fund pools are allocated amongst that list. And you know, for the next year, I'd like to understand better, you know, specifically the ARPA fund grants that are being distributed between fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. How those are distributed. This year, it looked like most of those did go to disadvantaged communities. And I noticed that some of those funds did go to communities that earned less points lower in the list than some others that didn't get any funding. So I'd like to understand that and hopefully have some more transparency this next year upcoming. So, so communities can understand where they may stand before they submit any project plans. Additionally, you know, just on the DWSRF scoring criteria, I've always had trouble understanding how communities that are under consent orders or any other orders are actually seems rewarded with more points rather than doing things the right way and being preventative and not earning those points for doing things right. So to me, that's something I struggled to understand. Additionally, trying to think, I know, I have a lot here coming into this, but I think that's, that's really it for now. Just trying to understand also. You know, Eagle put out on their DWSRF website, their planned use or their planned funds available to the communities. And I noticed that after this draft plan, which may change, some of those amounts did not add up per se, you know, some of that traditional loan amount and some of the other grant amounts that the band anticipated. So you know, just for the next year, twenty twenty-four, kind of having a great understanding of, you know, how those funds are going to be distributed. So it, it, it'll seem worthwhile for some of these communities, whether, you know, putting together these project plans is costly for some of these small communities and you know, it, it could be heartbreaking to put in thousands of dollars.
Yeah, one minute.
Year after year, not receive any funding. So more, the more transparency going forward ahead of the program each year, the better. That's, that's really all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, at this point, we're going to go online. And if anybody has a question or a, I guess not a question, I'm sorry, if you have a comment and you're online and you would like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand and I'll start going through you all. And just a reminder to please repeat your name and any organization you're with. I did notice that there's a couple of people that are calling in on the phone. And if you're calling in on the phone, listening and you'd like to make a comment, you hit, hit pound two on your phone and that'll raise your hand. So if you want to comment and you're on the phone only, hit pound two and it'll let me know that you want to make comment. All right, so let's take a look who we got here. Cindy Roper. So Cindy, I'm going to mute your line. You can go ahead and unmute your line and make your comment, please.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Cindy Roper and I'm a senior policy advocate with the Natural Resources Defense Council based here in the Lansing area. And I really appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposal that Eagle has put forward for the definitions and for the scoring criteria. I was involved in the original statute back in the late nineteen nineties and twenty-five years or so later, it's good that we are updating these and you know, bringing them in line with some of the more contemporary needs that exist. So again, really appreciate the work. Have a few comments specifically concerned that the overburdened communities definition includes an opportunity for communities that are at one hundred percent of the statewide median annual household income. We think that's too high based on that number as my calculations might not be perfect, but it looks like there are approximately eight hundred and eighty-eight communities that would fall into that one hundred percent range for overburdened. And that's about, you know, a little more than half of all of the Michigan communities are being identified as overburdened with that definition from again, my read of this, which could be wrong. If that number is changed to eighty percent of median annual household income, I came up with approximately three hundred and seventy-eight communities. And if it's dropped to seventy-five percent of median annual household income, that's about two hundred and seventy-six communities. So, you know, really looking for a way to make that overburdened definition to be more aligned with the, the word of overburdened and related to that is the concern of using one percent of median annual household income on the affordability index, and that is a really like broad and will include maybe many communities in that definition as well. So wanting to, you know, maybe if the median annual household income is lowered and the one percent is applied, that could be a way to get at a better, you know, number as far as from what we're concerned. Again, just wanted to flag that. And then also within some of the overburdened or significantly overburdened communities, making sure if there's, if there's a way to align the projects more closely to the spatial boundaries for, you know, the low income portions of those communities. There are examples happening right now of communities that would be considered overburdened where the infrastructure investments are happening in the wealthier portions of those communities. And so wanting to make sure that the money is going into the community set or the areas of the community that are will be submitting along with other partners additional comments on this definition, but appreciate the opportunity to speak here today.
Okay, thanks for your comment. Okay, next person with their hand raised is Dan Intosik. Dan, again, repeat your name and any organization you're with. You're muted now and us.
Hi, thanks for having us all here today for public comment on this topic. My name is Dan Intosik. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Ferndale. With the past disadvantaged community rules, it's something that we would never qualify for. But I do think that while, you know, it is pretty fair looking at medium household income taxable value and so on, you know, I do think actual budget related costs that are associated with that municipality in terms of capital related expenses, operational related expenses and revenues as some sort of a percentage needs to be looked at. For example, you know, for us, it relates to lead service line replacements. You know, we'll be spending ten million dollars between, you know, calendar year twenty-one and twenty twenty-three towards lead service line replacements as a unfunded mandate by the state of Michigan. Where in terms, you know, will we spend in, you know, roughly three point five million dollars replacing hundred-year-old water main? So to a sense, there is an overburden on our system to keep up with our much-needed capital investment that I don't think is taken into account with the way that scoring is currently calculated or the way the new scoring would be proposed. And I do think that's something that, you know, Eagle needs to look at because it is a burden for our community, knowing that, yeah, we could take twenty years to replace those lead service lines, still going to be a burden. But no matter what, it is a large expense that we have to share. And I think it is important that Eagle does take a look at, you know, maybe it's a percent of, you know, what this project, the community is submitting for, what that project's, you know, total value would cost in terms of the larger capital improvement plan that community has and, and allowing that as a, a, a scoring factor in terms of calculating whether someone is overburdened or significantly overburdened. And that's all I have. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, next person up, Chris Donaldson. Chris, you can unmute your microphone.
Hi there. I'm sorry. I don't have a comment. Just listening in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And I got one more person with their hand raised. Kristin Hian, Hian. Kristin, if you please repeat your name.
Yeah, yeah, Kristen. Hi, Tyen. Thank you. I'm a, I'm an advocate with Freshwater Future. We're a bi-national nonprofit. And we did submit comments recently, but I wanted to highlight and reiterate them here for you today. Pour my sheet here. First, with overburdened communities and with actually both definitions for significantly and regularly overburdened, we suggest that there should be an, the EJ screening tool, the environmental justice screening tool added to these definitions to try to take into account some of these legacy issues, the cumulative health effects, long-term disinvestment. And we, we think that this, well, this was developed for this type of situation and we would really like to see this implemented to keep environmental justice communities front and center. In addition, we think that the taxable value per capita indicator has not been tested and it is not used to our knowledge in any other state. And so because of the lack of information into how this indicator would be effective, you know, we have, we have concerns that how this would be good for this definition. And the my EJ screen tool would, we think would do a better job. In terms of the median household income of the area, when, when it comes to the overburdened communities, use of the median household annual income is concerning because it doesn't give any indication as to what percentage of income for the one percent of the MAHI for the cost. It doesn't give any indication of what the percentage would be for the lowest income households in the area. And MAHI too easily hides this burden when there's a stratified income in the area. Now I'm going to move to the scoring criteria. In terms of the language for consolidation, we would like to see, we would like to see extra language that puts in protections for any communities that may lose their own governance as a result of consolidation. So that there is, communities have a say in what happens with their systems as, as well as being compensated for anything that is shuttered within their community. So compensation for assets and being able to have joint oversight over their systems. So we just want to make sure that the systems that are consolidated aren't consolidated and taking away power from another community. Lastly, we, or sorry, there's actually two more things I tried to fit in. So let's service line replacements. We would like to ink that score to be increased to twenty points rather than ten in order to incentivize proactive replacement. And lastly, this goes in line with something else someone else said, but the geographic flexibility of projects. If there is a community that's overburdened and they are situated within a larger system area that cannot be deemed a disadvantaged community or overburdened community. We, we feel that there should be flexibility to be able to target projects within overburdened communities.
That's over. If you, I just wrap it up, please.
Yep, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your comment today. All right, just checking to see if anyone else online has a comment. You can raise your hand. We got one more hand raised. Just want to let you know that in the, in the chat, you will find an email address in which if you have further comments you'd like to submit to us, you can do so by submitting them to France, France K at Michigan dot gov. It's F R A, excuse me, F R A N T Z K at Michigan dot gov. So if you'd like to do that, you can. Okay, next person that has indicated they would like to make a comment is Kelly Carl. Kelly, I have unmuted your line, so you could unmute on your end and make your comment.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Kelly Carl with the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. And thanks for the opportunity to speak today and thanks for the past stakeholder discussions as well. We did submit a letter, but I just wanted to make one point to reiterate about the stormwater topic and the scoring criteria. One of the changes to the recently passed state legislation included a change from stormwater treatment to stormwater management being allowable through the SRF program. And I think the SRF program has had a history of funding some stormwater projects related to that focus on stormwater treatment or smaller rain events. We're really encouraging and we hear this really from our whole membership community in Southeast Michigan. We need the ability to start to address drainage projects and flooding. And as we've seen with some of the extreme rain events and the flooding that's occurred into our region, it's a priority. We had a task, we have a task force of eighty people flooding and funding to address stormwater are continue to be the number one priority on the stormwater side. And that goes across transportation and water infrastructure. The change was really made to reflect what's allowable through the EPA language for SRF programs. And so I don't think it's inconsistent for Eagle to consider and the state of Michigan to consider broadening that eligibility. I think it'll address both the wastewater side, especially in the combined sewer areas as well as separated areas. And it's very much needed, I think, across the state. And I think you'll hear that in some of the repeated comments that you receive in your written, you know, on the written platform as well. And that's all. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comment. Just want to let everybody know too, that we did have a comment come in via the chat. The Q and A, this is from Matt Bio from place in Vanderbrink Engineering. The comment is when a community is just over the median income, can they be given grace? Say they are thirty-eight thousand versus the qualifier of thirty-five thousand two hundred dollars. A very small variance like this is heartbreaking to a community. Thank you for hearing the comment. So that'll be entered in for the record as well. So that'll be entered in for the record as well. Okay, just making another call for people that would like to comment and we did have another person with their hand raised. Robert Sisler. Hold on a second, Robert. For some reason, it's not allowing me to unmute your line. This happens sometimes with Zoom. It's saying you have an older version of Zoom, so. It won't let me unmute you. So either you can do two things, you can. Log off, let it update and come back in and I'll, we'll see if you come back in or you can type your comment in or email it. So one or the other. Sorry about that. Well, every once in a while, we have somebody with an older version of Zoom doesn't let us unmute it. I'm gonna put another call out there for anybody else that would like to make a comment. Anybody else here? All right, another hand up. David. David, I've muted your line. You can go ahead and make your comment. Repeat your name, please.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dave Udi. I'm the supervisor in Garrish Township, Ross Common County, up here at Higgins Lake. I just have a general comment about a project that we've been working on for the last three years in our community up here. We're we're proposing to our communities to put a new sewer sewer system around Higgins Lake, twenty-six miles. Servicing initially thirty-eight hundred homes. The the system is has been projected to be expandable to fifty-five hundred homes. At Higgins Lake, we have a high density of homes on septic tanks. And the septic tanks are creating not only a problem with the drinking water, you know, with the close proximity of of septic tanks to to. To what wells that service the home, but also is polluting the lake. Sometimes we get the feeling that because because we're we're we've we have a new system in northern Michigan. With a price tag of near a hundred and fifteen million dollars. And because of that, you know, we we feel we feel sometimes that 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 because. Of the 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 few number of homes and the size of of the the tremendous size of the project dollar-wise. In a community that really can't afford to fund a hundred and fifteen million dollar project. We feel sometimes that we're left out, you know, in the cold when 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 dealing with this with a state budget. And we get it, you know, that that the cities and municipalities generally suck up most all of the funds. But it just seems to me that that there's got to be a a recognition of communities like ours that are making. Making a Herculean attempt to to protect not only the drinking water of the residents in our community. But to protect one of the gems of the of the state itself, Higgins Lake. And so as as you as you proceed to make, you know, guidelines and and scoring. Systems for for funding, I don't, I'd I'd like some sort of sense that 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 we are also included. That we're a part of the state that that are are we pay taxes. There's a million people to visit Higgins Lake each year. And so I just wanted to to raise my hand and 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 get a shout out to everyone. Hey, we're up here. You know, we're part of the state too. And I just, I just like to make sure that that's that's small communities like ours. That are making valiant efforts to put in a new sewer system. I don't know too many new sewer systems that are going on in northern Michigan. But we're proposing one. We're applying, we're applying for Clean Water SRF, you know, November this year for twenty-four. And so we just don't want to be forgotten. And so I appreciate the time. I I've appreciated the conversation. It's it's interesting to listen. But we're up here too and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, I'm gonna do a last call for any comments. Reminder that if you're on the phone and you'd like to make a comment, you just hit pound two. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. So James, are you okay with us reading the closing statement? Okay. All right, so we're gonna read my closing statement and we'll kind of wrap this up, all right? All right, so thank you for taking the time to participate in this afternoon's meeting. We appreciate your interest in that you took the time to be here today. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the comment period will close at midnight on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The hearing is now closed and I want to thank you again. And now that we're done with the official part of it, I just want to remind people that if you do have a comment still, you can send it via email. Do the fifteenth to the email address I mentioned. It should be in the chat for those online. And again, I apologize for if you had any issues with hearing anything or just want to remind you that we do record this. And it is given to the staff here to review. And also we put it online. So the recording of this session and we post it on our YouTube channel. Probably by early next week, once we get it captioned and put on there. And I do have your email addresses for those people here. And those online. So I know, James, there was a question about the PowerPoint for today. Is that gonna be posted online or is that can can that be shared? Okay, so James says we'll post it online and we can send an email out to people when it is posted out there and keep you all updated like that. So. Thank you all for attending today and have a good rest of your afternoon. Thank you.